One nation, united in God, and in the faithful, we will be just as strong.
Happy birthday for here, same happy birthday for Chad.
All right, we'll go ahead and call our meeting into order, start with the roll call. Misty Cottle.
Here.
Jeff Upden.
Here.
Jan Frogmorton. John Collins.
Here.
Pierre Hungate.
Here.
Don Rollins. Joe Towor.
Here.
City Attorney, City Clerk are present. So first item on our agenda is the approval of the agenda. I do need to make an amendment before we approve that. I need to add an amendment for the agreement with our engineering company for... This is for easements, right, Nate?
Yes.
So it's to procure the easements for the sewer line. So we can add that to new business item number four. Is there any other questions or issues on the agenda? Do we have a motion to approve it?
I'll make the motion to approve the agenda if we have it for city.
Motion second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Next is the approval of our minutes from our December 2018 meeting. Are there any changes that need to be made to those? Do we have a motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Motion second, all those in favor say yes.
Yes.
Those opposed, no. Next, I would like to appoint Dana McKnight as Alderman toward three, position two. Motion, second. Is there any discussion? Any questions for Dana to put her on the hot seat?
Welcome aboard.
Good luck.
All those in favor say yes.
Yes.
All those opposed, no. Motion carries. Welcome aboard, Dana. Come grab a seat.
We saved all the tough part of the agenda just...
You can pick us up.
All right, so next we have all of our newly elected appointed officials taking the oath, their oath. So if you would stand with me, raise your right hand. So as I read this, I'm going to say, "I state your name." Let me state your name. So I...
Hi, I'm Misty Cottle.
State your name. Do solemnly swear
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States
And I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And the Constitution of the State of Arkansas.
And that I will faithfully discharge
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of the office of Alderman and Clerk
The duties of the office of Alderman and Clerk.
Upon which I am now about to enter.
So much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And I will need each of you to sign this before you leave tonight. All right, next is our public forum. In our public forum, we allow two minutes to anyone who would like to address the council. We may ask questions or comments, but we won't take action on anything that's brought up here in the public forum. Is there anyone that would like to address us?
I do. Always have to say a word.
Well, you've got to tell us who you are.
I'm on the way to tell you who I am.
Okay.
Haven't changed a bit, except had too many birthdays. I'm Caroline Smith Hamilton. And I haven't been here in a while because of health issues and broken bones and so forth. But I checked up on all y'all. I have sources. And I came to tell you, this week, past week, I had the occasion to use the paramedics and the police department. And they all did a super duper swift job, you know? So I came to tell the police chiefs, they need a raise. And the fire department guy, he helped me in with Nick because I parked him back. Everybody in my book needs a raise. And the city council is doing good, so y'all can keep on.
Thank you very much for that, Ms. Caroline.
I'm giving you permission.
Okay. We can take that under advisement.
Yeah.
So thank both of you and your departments. Would anybody else like to addresses? Yes, ma'am.
I am at ten percent, and I'm reporting on the Small Town Big Lights project. So we had nine entries and were super excited to see so many lights in Westport compared to last year. There were some great lights that didn't enter, and so you had to enter to win. And thanks to our sponsors, everyone got a cash prize. So I am super excited about that. We already have sponsors in line for next year. And I know there's been some discussion on if we'd like to have additional sponsors. And I would say that yes, if anybody would like to sponsor, that we would obviously welcome that very much. And we have decided to meet quarterly to discuss the Small Town Big Lights project. And our first meeting is going to be Tuesday, March the 5th, and the location will be decided. And at the last meeting, I thought we had a good variety of community participation. And we discussed that perhaps we should have the parade on the first Saturday in December as an annual event. And so that would be December the 7th this year. So that is exciting. Let's see. So the Memorial Project will also meet on Tuesday, March the 5th. And I also wanted to note that on our scoring, that we did have a scoring process. And it was a, you know, blind score sheet that was tabulated. And so that's how we came up with our winners. Any questions?
Any questions? We had a good payout this year, though, right, Jennifer? Do you remember what first place was?
Seventy dollars, perhaps. I would hope that...
We had split first prizes, right?
Right. I would hope that all of you received the email about that. And if you don't, I'd love to know that you didn't, that I don't have the right email address for that. So we...
It's actually in, I can look at it on the checks that were wrote. Two got first place tied seventy-five dollars each.
Okay, yeah.
Second place got fifty dollars. Third place got forty-five dollars. And all the honorable mentions got twenty-one dollars.
Yeah, so we were able to use all of our sponsors. And of course, no cash was provided by the city. So, thank you.
Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the council? All right, we'll close our public forum, move into our business reports. Up first is the Planning Commission. Chief, one of you ever went first?
He's trying to get out of here. That's right. I'm quick. I'm real quick.
(inaudible).
Oh, yes.
So, not a whole lot, again, this month so far, nothing on the agenda. Hopefully, somebody from regional planning is going to come down and give us a little bit of kind of instruction. I was trying to get Jeff Hawkins to come down, and I've got him scheduled for our February meeting. So he'll be here for that. And it's still kind of a maybe on whether or not we'll have somebody down to just talk to us through procedural stuff and stuff we might like to learn. Other than that, it's really just kind of looking forward to learning some more and then hopefully maybe some proposals at some point. So, any questions?
Questions? All right.
All right.
Thank you, Walter. Oh, and I would like to point out also that the Planning Commission had a resignation on its right hand. So we are looking for another member there. We have six, seven slots. So if anyone knows, if someone would like to be on the Planning Commission, seek Christie at the city. She has a form for you to fill out for your name and address, contact information. Next, the Library Report. Paula, are you going to give that?
I like the way she did it. Y'all can just go ahead, but you don't get no raise. Everybody else gets raises. This is just sort of informational thing, so you'll sort of know what we're doing. At the library, we have found out that we're very, very dumb, don't know a whole lot about what's going on. But we're finding out, and that's pretty interesting. Susan gave me a couple of items, and one of them was that she... The county is helping us out a whole lot. If it, right now, we're really leaning on them, and if it wasn't for that, I don't know what we'd do. We also have three really exceptional employees down there. So far, they haven't told us no to anything that we've asked them to do. And everything that we ask them to do is time-consuming for them. It means extra time and, you know, of course, they're filling in, so they're putting in extra time anyway. But the county sent us this one that says we have thirty, and I don't know where these are at, thirty-nine thousand ninety-four items in our system. That include the lost, the missing, the checked out, the billed, and everything else. But that's a whole lot, thirty-nine thousand. And in 2018, we added thousand eight hundred and twenty-three. And since Friday, when our counter was fixed, we have run two-hundred-and-fifty-seven people through the library. We've had, out of that thirty-nine thousand, we have twenty-thousand-one-hundred-and-seventy-five items that were not checked out. That's DVDs, books, or whatever that was not checked out in last year. We had two-thousand-nine-hundred-and-sixty patrons last year. Thought that was pretty good. We're assuming that this is in 2018, so although the figure is true, we're not sure exactly where it goes to. We know that when they gave us an overall figure, we assume, went all the way back to when the library started, that we were fifty-one thousand dollars in the hole on our fines that were not collected.
So before you move on, let's clarify that just a little bit. Not necessarily in the hole, but fines that weren't collected.
That's the hole.
The library budget as a whole is not in the hole.
Okay, I'll go with you. We're assuming this is a 2018 number, and it's sixteen thousand five hundred and forty-two that was not collected. We are in the process of deleting a hundred books. We put a freeze on right after the executive meeting that we had for no purchases, no buying, nothing. We just run it, and that was it. So we've still got that on until we get a new librarian and, you know, the board decides what they want to do with that. Which, by the way, the board is Dorothy Carney, Deborah Harnish, Judy Tiller, Susan McCowen, and myself. We're going to delete, hopefully, a hundred books. Because we don't want to buy a hundred books if we're going to tote somewhere else here in a couple of months. So we're going to delete a hundred books. And if we can delete a hundred books, and that's those are books that have not been checked out within the last year. So if we can do that, we'll buy a hundred books. So we'll be evening out, just leaving it like it is. We also have a huge list of DVDs that are duplicates. Matter of fact, the wall is probably every bit as long as that wall right there. And so we've got a list, they're going to go, we're going to go through that and see how many of the duplicates we can get rid of. The VHF's we're going to throw away. And we would do it legally, Christie. But nobody, nobody uses them or, I guess, can use them anymore because they said they're never checked out. So we are going to go through that and do that. We're working on a informational letter to send to the patrons, to everyone that's on our computer. Kind of giving them a little bit of information on what's going on right now, like what time, you know, the library is open, what time it closes, what the fees are to, you know, to delinquent books. The maximum, five dollars right now, maybe we may lower it. But for right now, five dollars is the maximum that you can have in overdue fines and be able to check out a book. If you go four ninety-nine, you can still check out a book. But we're talking about bringing that down a little bit because some of the others, they don't go that high. I think Farmington's was two dollars, I think. We want to let them know when the expansion is expected to start and when it's expected to end. We want them to know that we can still get books for them if it's not in the library that, you know, in the building where we're at. You know, maybe we can get it, you know, from another library. Basically, that we're really, you know, willing to work with, you know, anybody that has a book that they want. And basically, just telling them, you know, be patient with us, work with us, and we'll work with you. We do have till the 11th at noon for applications to come in for in-house. If we don't have anybody in that length of time, then we'll put it out for the public. And that's about everything that we've gotten into so far. Every time I walk in the door, we get something different. You never know. Thanks.
Any questions for Paula before she runs off?
Yeah, can we kind of get them in our reports? We have all those numbers, like everybody else does a report.
I bet we'll have...
You actually don't have anybody that does a report like that. This is just off of a piece of paper that I found.
Well, I don't like when you had us...
And grabbed it.
I'll order them.
So we will have the...
It'll be in minutes.
Do you want this? You won't be able to tell anything on it.
Your phone. I've looked at it, so I can help you with it. Any other questions for Paula?
Thank you. I'd like to busy.
We are working on a report that nobody knew how we got it, all that kind of stuff, so.
All of the numbers and the stuff that's checked out. I mean, I normally get one every month.
Right.
And I didn't know how we got it.
And so we have repaired the door counter, so we'll start getting that again to see how many people are visiting the library. I don't know if you guys have been down there, but the staff and the board have cleaned that place out like you wouldn't believe. They've really been putting a lot of work into that. And at their last meeting, I let them know that they are planning on keeping the library open, maybe shutting it for a very, very small portion of time. The discussion was with the construction that we would be in the oldest part of the library that would remain open while the construction of the new building took place and the remodel of the newest old part of the library. And then, once that was finished, we would, there may be a couple of weeks of downtime, but then the library would move into the newly renovated new construction area and carry on the block that they've moved up. Any other questions about the library? All right. Paulette is not here. And I promised Dana in text that we would have Paulette give us a detailed review of her report, just because I can always use an update on that thing. But a couple of things to note, Paulette said this in passing to me, but it caught my attention. If you'll notice, that our year-to-date collections at the court are five-hundred-and-sixty-thousand-six-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars. It's about the, what's column F, Dana? F-29. And if you look over to column K, row thirty, last year it was four-hundred-and-fifty-four-thousand. So they're over a hundred thousand dollars up on collections through the court this year. And Paulette had said that this is the first time, I believe she said, since 2014 that they've collected over five-hundred thousand dollars at the court. So they've really been busy there. So next month, we'll get Paulette to give you a detailed report on how to read this thing. Are there any other questions concerning the court? Chief Nelson, would you?
All right. I was so excited to get up here, I guess. Service calls, we're at four forty-one. For those who've been paying attention, that's the highest of the year. Why? I don't know. We didn't have anything major, but it was, I guess, just your typical, typical sort of stuff. We took thirty-two reports, had a hundred and twelve citations. Ninety-seven warrants served with five felonies, three misdemeanor arrests. I know we issued six juvenile citations. The one thing I want to hit on with shop with cop went very well. We had twenty kids. And I want to thank the Arkansas Fish. They helped out. The state police and the highway police showed up to help out. So I think the kids had fun. They were a little leery of, I think they were a little scared of those state policemen. But at the end of the day, they really enjoyed themselves. And we appreciate everybody that helped out and donated. A lot of that, that West Fest, gave a big chunk of money. We appreciate that. It went really, really well. Besides that, do you have any questions?
Travis over at the Police Department, if you guys will get that back page of the police report with the monthly graph, he added totals to that. So the Police Department had four thousand, we evened the total calls for service.
For the year.
For the year.
Yeah, we definitely had a lot of calls, that's for sure.
Any questions for Chief Nelson? Thank you, sir. Public Works.
I don't have a lot, since Chad pointed out that my portion of minutes is as big as everybody else has put together. One thing I did, I did talk to John Cummings with the Arkansas Missouri Railroad today. He is working with his lawyer to get the easement closed for Wheeler and extend the easements for Main Street and White Street, so that those who can go ahead. And he talked like probably a month, there's a month out. They had a crew down here replacing a bunch of ties, and he thought they could get that done while they were here, so. But other than that, I'm waiting on sewer camera, and I'll take any questions.
Did you get that thing from Fayetteville that you were running?
The wash unit? I still haven't seen it on GovDeals. So we are, Elkins is wanting that pretty bad, so I'm not sure how much they, how much money they got to throw at that, but they're wanting that pretty bad.
Can you share?
I wish.
Is it something that you use every day?
No, we wouldn't use it every day. And like we talked about at our, at our meeting, for the, for the price that we're paying Fayetteville to come down and fix our backups, unclog our backups and stuff, it's really not feasible for us to go out and spend a bunch of money on that unit. I mean, for a couple hundred bucks, we get them down here and they, they clean, you know, three or four hundred-foot pipe while they're here, so.
So we wouldn't want to split it, try to put it together?
No, and I, I mean, I can talk to Foster out there at Elkins. I'm sure they, they've got way more sewer line than we got. They may be able to keep that thing busy quite a bit. But it may be something where we can look at, you know, we can run over and grab it when we do have a backup and use it, for sure. And save us, save us a little money, just a fuel cost going over and picking it up and back. So, yeah, I'll talk to Dwayne. I've known him for a while.
Any other questions, Vady?
We did point out another committee.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, we've got that in the new business, too.
Yeah.
So I would like to point out, Isaac, I read all of your minutes. They're very good. And on the back of them, Chad, you should take notes here, twenty-nineteen goals. I was very impressed, Isaac, that at your committee meeting, you guys did talk about goals for twenty-nineteen. I didn't see that in the parks minutes, so.
Right.
Birthday or not. So anyway, I would recommend everybody take a look at that. Isaac's got some goals laid out, and I was happy to hear you guys discuss that. Impressed that you did sit down at your first meeting of the year. I mean, like, one of them a lot. Yeah. And you outlined those goals in...
Oh, and to your, the Di Creek Bridge, as soon as the government gets started back up, I should get approval on that.
We're going to start the government back up? Why would we do that?
They're sitting on somebody's desk waiting for signatures, so.
Oh, I have that now. That's all right, I can go left and go out.
And one other thing, the Weststrom leak detection deal that's in the packet, we are going to go ahead and get them here to, to go ahead and do, that's for the entire city. That price of thirty-five hundred dollars is to do the entire city.
That looks like a pretty good deal.
So, so we're going to get, get them to come down on a, on a good week and let them try to find some leaks that we can't find.
So goals for the Sewer Department for twenty-nineteen, just for everyone that doesn't have a pack in front of them. Use resources within the water budget to reduce the inflow and infiltration into the sewer, work rehab, our storage tank on Tower Street. Help reduce water loss. Street Department goals, complete sidewalk projects, which are Robinson...
Doak and Main and Doak and the railroad crossings here, and then Robinson.
And then complete the Di Creek, Creek Cross.
Yeah.
Very good, thank you, Isaac. Parks Director Chad Harrison, happy birthday, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I do want to clarify, my comment was about the city council minutes in his, his report all along at once. But I do, I didn't put any minutes in your packet because we, actually, our Parks Committee met today. We met early enough in December that those minutes were in your, in your December's packet. So I didn't have any minutes or anything to put into the packet this month. We are working on several projects down there to get ready for the season. I won't go into all those, but they will be in the minutes that you'll get in your packet next week, next month, so I won't, you know, no spoilers. A couple of things I do want to point out that we did set for today at our meeting is we set our date for the Fourth of July event. We always like to set that in January, that way if there's any issues and we can get, start working on sponsors and different things and get, it takes that long to plan that event. So it will be on the third again, which is a Wednesday. It was a little bit of a concern because we'd get so much cooperation through the churches and stuff. But I did speak with the leaders of those churches, and they, they don't see that as a problem. They'll be there to help us out volunteer-wise and otherwise. So we're going to keep it on the third. So it will be on Wednesday, the third, this year. We've also set a date for the, we are going to assist Seek Church in their Easter egg festival again at Riverside this year, and they've set a date for that of April thirteenth And then we are just, we're preparing for the baseball and softball season. I started signups last week. Some stuff, if it hasn't already, should, should went out with the kids at the school as well as on Facebook, on our marquee. I'm going to be up, our plan to be up at the Pee-wee basketball games this Saturday. So start working on those. And don't forget, I do have a forum for you, Misty. And then those, a lot of those projects are getting the park and the facilities ready for the season. So we got a couple pretty days this week, so we did get a little bit done, but a lot more to do and hopefully it'll dry up, and the weather will help us to be able to get some of those done quickly. And that's about all I have.
Any questions for Chad? So I gave him a bad time, but I do know that he had some goals set forth, too, some plans for the parks, but we'll wait till next month.
We've got some projects and some things that are coming up that will be good and help extend our park system a little bit, hopefully.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Chief Mars?
I don't have a lot either. Average month, average year, actually, our yearly totals are down a little bit from last year. We average about two and a half calls a day, which, you know, being down from last year is actually a good thing. So combination of the rain, we hadn't let any burns, we hadn't had a lot of power calls lately, so been good. Other than that, I'd, unless you have any questions, I just don't have anything.
Any questions for Chief Myers? So I will point out that Chief Myers assisted me on a, a, a meeting with one of our residents.
I think you jerked me into that, I think.
I'm not sure who, how that worked, but, uh, anyway, I do thank you for that. We had a discussion about, uh, the street crossing, uh, railroad crossing. Anyway, uh, I appreciate you and Travis going with me.
Appreciate you going with us.
A little bit.
You didn't need to run down and figure that out?
Hey, I finished twenty-eighteen. Um, we increased our bank balances, uh, for the year by a hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars. The departments, um, as a whole for the city, ended up being a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars income over expense for the year. Um, and our, uh, county sales tax increased by five percent this year and the city's sales tax increased by seven percent this year. So I think overall, our departments did really good. Um, and the budgets, only one department came in under budget and, or over budget, sorry, and it was a small amount, so. I think, overall, they did pretty good. Um, the water, on your water report, uh, there is an error on it. I don't know exactly where it's at. Um, he pointed it out to me. The, uh, bottom line of the income and loss for the year, uh, that number actually should be fifty-six thousand instead of sixty-three. So somewhere throughout the year, I have, uh, put in an, an expense total wrong there, so I'm not sure which month that was that I made the error in, but it was. So the overall, uh, budget for the water was fifty-six thousand, eight-hundred-and-fifty-one dollars. And they increased their bank balances by fifteen, a little over fifteen thousand, uh, this year, so the, the water department did really well also. Um, this is, I guess we'll just pass it around, it's just a sample of the, uh, letters that the employees will receive this week when they receive their first, uh, pay stubs. It's a letter that shows their total compensation, um, for the year that we put together to help them understand exactly what all the city does contribute towards, towards their pay. It's not just a salary line item. Um, so I wanted you guys to see that, so you could see what they were getting. Um, I did have an update from the, um, Arca builders today from Baldwin and Shell. The bids will go out for, uh, will be published this Sunday, um, and we'll do a bid opening on the thirty-first of January. Um, so hopefully, at that point, we'll know exactly where we fall with budgets and can get started. Um, just for information purposes, beginning in March, we will have all of our, uh, city council meetings at the fire department until after construction's complete. Um, we're looking at the construction ranging from March to end of September for the library. I think they're talking about June for the community center and July sometime, I think it was, for this building. So, most of the summer months will be in construction on the three buildings.
Please, and then it starts in March?
They'll start construction in March, assuming that we get the bids that we need to and all, the construction on all three projects. But the meetings, is that what you meant? I'm sorry, yeah. Starting in March, we'll have the, the council meetings at the fire department. No, I have one more thing. Our insurance, um, we changed insurances and we, uh, they were supposed to set us up on, we have it, all the employees have insurance. Let me start with that, so if nobody thinks that they don't have insurance, they do, they are covered. But we had a employee change right at the end of the year, so our numbers went from having twenty-one employees to twenty employees. So on the thirty-first, we had twenty-one employees, on the first, we had twenty employees. Because of that, our rates changed. Because our new policy was effective on the first, so it had to go by the number of employees we had on the first. Um, so basically what that boils down to is a seven dollar a month per employee, so it's about sixteen hundred, almost seventeen hundred dollars a year for the, for the whole city to absorb. So it's not, wasn't anything major, but it's been a pain trying to get everything, uh, situated so that we can actually get the employees' cards and get them out, go on, on their insurance. Other than that, I think that's all I have.
Any questions for Kristi? Kristi, I would like to thank you and all the department heads for the work you've done on budget this year. Everyone's, um, I know everyone's made sacrifices on this one, and they've got to keep track of all of those. And so, we've got the one-eighty-five that we were under budget, uh, on citywide, and then another fifteen-ish for, uh, for water.
Fifty-six.
Fifty-six.
For the water, yeah. They, they increased their bank balances by fifty-two thousand, but they're fifty-six thousand under budget for the water.
So we're looking at two-hundred-and-forty-ish that, that we came in under budget this year, so. Just that one mistake.
I know, sorry.
That's why she has to take the balance.
That's a lot to keep up with, but it's not bad.
All right. So, old business. Should've just, like, you want to stand up there and?
Because that was my error too, probably.
So in twenty-seventeen, um, is when we went into contract with Baldwin and Shell for the construction projects. The minutes reflect that we authorized the mayor to go into negotiation for contracts, but they didn't ever state that we actually approved the contract. So, for the auditor, um, he would like us to go back and retroactively approve that contract. Um, Ann's got a copy of it with her, I didn't want to put it in here because it's huge. Um, the basics, um, the effective date was May ninth. Um, it did put me as the representative for the city, so any of the, um, change orders, something like that, come, come through me. Um, and then the, uh, pre-construction phase, the cost of the pre-construction phase was, uh, twelve thousand five hundred dollars. And the, uh, construction phase of it's five, uh, point five percent of the completed work plus the reimbursables. So that's the kind of sum of the details of the contract.
Does it still appear with them? With the officer?
Yes, yes.
Does anyone have any questions regarding that? I, I still think we approved that.
I think we did too, but it didn't get the minutes.
And, we, they've done great, y'all, on the city building that they finished already, so. Do we have a motion to approve this retroactively? Motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, same, uh, motion carries.
I'll just step it.
Yeah. Yeah, play your ticket, hold me there. So, next is new business. First item is, uh, Resolution two-zero-one-nine-zero-one to approve the twenty-eighteen budget adjustments. You want to explain to them what we're doing?
Um, so basically, those are any expense item that went over what we had originally budgeted. Um, some of those we had, well, well, most of the big ones, we had approved throughout the year. Um, I know we had, like, architecture services that cost us over thirty-five thousand in one line item. So some of those are big, big items, um, but all the lines that are underlined there, we went over what we had budgeted. So at the end of the year, we have to do a resol- resolution, basically approving that as our new budget for that line item. That's what this is.
And so on Exhibit A, Kristi has all of those underlined for us.
That's, Jeff called me, uh, today and I did do a total on all those. Total, that's, it's a little over a hundred and fifty-two thousand in total adjustments, is the total number on that.
And like Kristi said, most of these, we, we already knew were going to, all the big, the major ones we knew about.
We discussed it.
Yes, so. Is there any other discussion or questions concerning that? Do we have a motion? Second? Motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries. Next item under new business is the request for qualifications for, uh, an appraisal professional. Uh, and approval to negotiate the contract with Stuart Sanders. Nick, do you want to speak to this at all? Just let them know what, what's going on and.
Yeah, the, um, the RQ we put out was, um, for our sewer project, focused on that. As we're moving forward into design and trying to get construction documents put together, we're gonna have to, uh, unfortunately acquire easements. You know, when we cross private property and, and public lands, we're crossing some, some city-owned lands, but, um, part of the process is getting a value for the easement offers. And that's why I went out for a request to, to secure an appraiser that can, can help us with that. So we're not guessing at how much the, the land is worth, get a little professional opinion, then pull together an appraisal so we can make a fair offer and, and hopefully work through the negotiations pretty quickly with these owners.
Any questions regarding that from me? Do we have a motion? Motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, say no? Motion carries. You say you're going to, Nick?
Okay.
We'll get back to you in just a second.
Sure.
Uh, item three in the new business, uh, I would like to appoint Anita Lowry to the Water and Wastewater Committee. For any of you who do not know who she is, she has served in the city government for decades. So I would, um, the Water and Sewer Commission made this recommendation to me. Anita started attending their meetings before, uh, leaving the council, uh, and she was a welcome addition, uh, to Water and Sewer. I'll make the motion. Okay.
You've got to sell them.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries, that's Anita. Item number four. Is an amendment to our contract, uh, for, I already got what it's for, Nick?
It's, it's for easement negotiation services.
So it's, it tied into the appraisal, but?
Yeah, so we'll have an appraiser to get the value for the property, but, um, this is to have, have someone. We have a, have a lady we've been working with for numerous years, helping us in this situation, to actually go out and get the owner information, go out and contact the owner, work with them on negotiating, you know, the final easement cost and doing all the paperwork, filing it for us. And, um, you know, this, this amendment would cover that, cover her, her fees to, to help us with that. And we're estimating, we've got, I think, about forty-two parcels total on the project. Isaac's already done a great job and helped us get five of them on his own, and I think it was a couple of months ago when he came to me and said, um, I need help. Because it's, it's, it is a time-consuming process and it requires a lot of follow-up and interaction and meeting with them at their house, you know, at all kinds of hours, so. Um, so Isaac's taking care of five of them and seven of them are owned by municipal or county. So those, we're assuming we won't need any assistance there, we'll work directly with those, those folks on it. So it leaves us with thirty, thirty owners that we'll need to, you know, private owners that we'll need to get easements from. So, this would cover her costs to, to help us get those easements negotiated and secured.
And what we're looking at here is, we're, we're rolling this in under your contract, which allows us to use, uh, the funds that we're getting for the, for the overall project to pay for this.
Yes, that's, I was gonna mention that. It's, it's, it doesn't affect the, the total funding package, it doesn't mean we're having to go borrow more money. It's, it was already included in there. We had a lot of, most of our items defined, then we had contingency at the bottom for items like this that would come up that give us the ability to, to do that. So there's no, no additional funding, no more money coming in. It's that, that number we got last year is, is set, so that's just coming out of that.
Any questions concerning that? Do we have a motion to move forward? So, we have a motion second to approve that. All those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no? Motion carries.
Cassie, yeah, I was gonna say, you've worked with Cassie. She's good. Well, thank y'all.
Appreciate it.
We're moving forward really fast. And NRC's helping too, luckily they're not shut down right now. I turned in two reports, uh, right before New Year's, the environmental report and that, uh, facility plan. And January second, I got an email on the environmental report and it's good to go. Minus the public hearing that we need to do. So, waiting on comments on the facility plan, but, uh, they're, they're definitely committed to keeping this thing moving too, so, it's good. All right, I think you're.
Thank you, sir. So the last item on the agenda is the mayor's comments. I have our state of the city, which is required for each year. So, for twenty-eighteen, state of the city of West Fork. West Fork continued to see growth and advancements in two thousand eighteen, and I am encouraged by the participation effort that continues to grow in our city. Our council and committees are fully staffed. We are seeing an increase in citizen participation at all meetings. As always, I'm blown away at the volunteer efforts of our employees and their families. Growth and advancements can be measured using many metrics, revenue, population, building, goals met, et cetera. I'm pleased to report that each city department had departmental growth and advancements in two thousand eighteen. A few advancements from the business office include, sales tax revenue was up roughly six percent, and once again, city expenses were coming in well over budget. In two thousand eighteen, the city administration moved into the new office on Centennial. I know that the city staff enjoy the new space and I believe everyone finds convenience in the drive-through of making payments. We have architect drawings and construction schedules for the library, courts and community center projects, and should see construction began in early two thousand nineteen. The city also changed insurance brokers, allowing us to offer multiple options to the employees for health insurance coverage. The Parks Department reported another successful year of youth sports with over three hundred and fifty local youth participating. Parks Department also coordinated and assisted with many events in two thousand eighteen. The Easter Egg Hunt, the Fourth of July Celebration, West Fest and our Christmas parade. Parks completed multiple improvements to the grounds and facilities, including asphalting around concession area and overflow parking. Installed a new flagpole, uh, parking lot striping, added signage at Riverside to reduce issues such as drinking, parking violations and jumping off the gloves. Parks also replaced a twenty-year-old vehicle and added to their maintenance equipment. West Fork Police Department continued their implement, implementation of technology with the installation of a mobile-based recording system, reducing downtime spent filing manual reports. Our team of officers completed fifteen hundred hours of continuing education training in a wide range of subjects. I'm also very pleased that our officers spent eighteen, eighteen hundred and fifty-four hours of their own time teaching at the Arkansas Law Enforcement Training Academy. The police department assisted other departments and or coordinated with many other events throughout twenty eighteen, including a national drug takeback that collected a hundred and fifty pounds, Shop With A Cop, active shooter training at the schools, Coffee With A Cop, Fourth of July and many others. The Public Works had another successful year of improvement and updating our city infrastructure. These improvements and updates include adding an additional two thousand feet of asphalt, repairing twenty-two water leaks, installation of sixty-five water meters, complete update of the city building codes, cellular, cellular metering capabilities of our water storage tanks, re-pumbing work at the Alvalo Pump Station and replacing a section of water main along McNy Street. Public Works has also received a grant to install sidewalks along Robinson Street, worked with the railroad to an agreement to install two, uh, two sidewalk lanes along Main Street and White Street. It is also notable that we issued forty-six building permits, five of which were new construction. In two thousand and eighteen, the fire department's focus was on training and upgrading safety equipment. They have added many hours of medical training to the regiment as well as NFA compliance training. They have began, begun to upgrade lighting on their trucks to LED lighting and are purchasing new safety vests for firefighters. They have also added a support vehicle to be used to structure fires to carry extra supplies, equipment and medical aid to increase the recovery time for the firefighters on the scene. The courts have seen dramatic increase in caseload during twenty eighteen, almost doubling the caseload for two thousand and seventeen. The courts added an additional employee in twenty eighteen, and this has really enabled them to reduce their backlog and keep up with the increase in caseload. In twenty eighteen, the courts took in over five hundred thousand in revenue, a milestone last seen in two thousand and fourteen. The court bringing on two new employees over the course of twenty eighteen. They have spent many hours in training classes. Courts officially have a construction schedule and have been in talks with neighboring cities about the use of their facilities while our renovations take place. West Fork Library spent much of two thousand and eighteen in planning mode, reviewing and adjusting the blueprint for expansion and expansion, as well as reducing inventory before the start of construction. The library staff and library board have completed inventory cleaning, the general library cleaning and much-needed library deflating. The library has a construction, construction schedule that will begin. The library has a construction, construction schedule that will begin, begin and end construction, uh, construction schedule with details beginning and ending construction, as well as planned space availability throughout the construction process. As you can see, 2018 was a very productive year for the city of Westford. Our revenues increased at a greater rate than our expenses. We had both new homes and businesses added and each department was successful in attaining many of their stated goals for 2018. With the success and achievements gained in 2018, I am encouraged and excited with the vision and goals set forth for the county. I will write that much smaller. But I do want to thank all of the, uh, department heads for assisting with that. They each gave me a report showing, uh, what their departments have completed in the prior years as we put that together. And, uh, I'm very pleased you guys did great. The last two years, I, I just can't, I can't tell you, uh, how appreciative I am for all the work that you guys did, so. That, I don't have any other comments, so I would entertain a motion to the chair. And the motion is second, all those in favor say yes?
Yes.
All those opposed, no, motion carries. All of the newly elected, please.